Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 20th meeting, our last meeting of the year. We're going to start with our high school students. Welcome Lucy and Morgan.
Good evening, everyone. So a couple announcements of things going on in our school. The Players Club had an amazing performance last month in their 24-hour musical. The cast and crew had one day to put together a performance of a surprise musical, Frozen. Everyone had an amazing time preparing and performing despite the time crunch, and the show was a huge accomplishment for everyone involved. Last month's film festival was a success. The showcase of student movies had some impressive films and a supportive audience. Congrats to all the films that won awards. The Eastchester Strength Program athletes participated in the annual Strength Combine this month with athletes from Sleepy Hollow. The students performed a series of exercises to test their agility, speed, and strength, and Eastchester won the competition. The Eastchester community just had its second annual We Are Eastchester block party, which had food, games, and student performances. It's always such a fun way to end the school year. Last week, the senior classes' WISE internships came to a close, and they celebrated by having their annual WISE showcase. All who participated in the program made a board explaining their experience and had the opportunity to learn about their peers' internships as well. And a big shout-out to Jacob Sanchez for creating the WISE video, which will be shown to classes for years to come. The senior class had their prom at the Glen Island Harbor Club. This event is always a student favorite, and we'd like to thank everyone who spent their time helping put together this magical night. Students had a great time forming teams and participating in the wiffle ball tournament. Thank you to the sophomore class, Ms. Ox and Mr. Poty, for helping put together this successful event. Each year, gift baskets are raffled at the senior fashion show. With next-year show only a few months away, the PTA has started to accept donations from all who would like to contribute to the baskets. The Players Club announced that their fall comedy will be The Play That Goes Wrong. Auditions will be held on the first day of school. All students are encouraged to participate. As this is my last meeting with the board, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to be a student representative and giving me the opportunity to speak to the community. Next year, I will be furthering my education at Lehigh University. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you, Morgan, and congratulations, Morgan. Okay, we have a very full agenda this evening, so I am going to turn it over to Dr. Valenti.
Let me begin by a brief announcement before getting to the full superintendent's report. The school district was notified by Lo-Hud last Friday, that's the newspaper throughout the region, online and the Journal News, as well as by News 12, that there was an inquiry regarding Mr. Anthony Rich, one of our district teachers, who we had reported to the community had passed in a very untimely manner some time ago. Based on the inquiry from Lo-Hud and today from News 12, I want to state publicly what we released to the media and put that on the record, that we were notified, specifically the superintendent, was notified by the Eastchester Police Department through Chief Joseph Rodriguez that an investigation had been initiated with respect to Mr. Anthony Rich. And the chief indicated that that investigation was based on the Westchester District Attorney's Office requests being made of the Police Department. At no time was the Eastchester School District involved in initiating that investigation. It came directly from the Police Department, but it is normal protocol that when an investigation of that nature was initiated, the district must take some type of appropriate action. We met with Mr. Rich and indicated to him that he would be placed on administrative leave with pay, emphasized, with pay, for the duration of the period of that investigation. And that action was accomplished by the district immediately and without question. Subsequent to that action, unfortunately, as I reported, Mr. Rich faced an untimely passing, and there was obviously, in our community, a great deal of grief amongst the faculty in general. Mr. Rich is a 28-year veteran of the school community, well-known by not only our own Eastchester School District community, but also broadly throughout the region, being one of the co-owners of a camp, Discovery Camp in Technology. So he himself and his wife are well-known throughout the community, as well as many of our faculty members who have worked at that camp. Needless to say, on that Monday morning following his passing, we met with the entire Greenville community. We met with them in a staff room and basically tried to share with them memories that they held and hold of Mr. Rich. And we had a full team of our PPS guidance counselors, support individuals, not only from the district, but thanks to Dr. Stowell, we were able to bring in individuals from the county as well as from the Bosse's, additional support to be helpful, not just the staff within the district, Greenville and Hutch and Waverly and middle school for the most part, but also for the students, especially at Greenville, where Mr. Rich served as a technology teacher for several years. I believe the week went extremely well with that support. Each day, there was a debriefing from the PPS staff. We spent about 45 minutes talking about what we accomplished, how we could better accomplish it the next day, where the needs were, what resources we need to reallocate to specific schools. So effort was made each day to adjust our response based upon the needs as were determined. And in closure, I want to indicate to the community that while the work was done well, we remain open to any other requests from students or parents who feel they have a need for counsel and support. Please direct your inquiries either to Dr. Stowell directly or to any of our principals who have agreed to be points of contact. Finally, I want to state categorically that our children's safety is our priority, and there was never a question about that, and there should never be a question going forward. So I'm going to conclude my statement on that point. If anyone has questions during public comment, that's their prerogative. There are restrictions on what can be said. I think I've faced a limit of restrictions, but I did want to make that comment. I'll now proceed with the rest of the report. So, good news, starting with our students. Morgan, we want to thank Morgan for being the high school representative to the Board of Education. We want to wish you well. I heard Lehigh, is that right?
Yes.
I was listening. Congratulations, Morgan. The board thanks you. Your administration here, thank you, and we think you have a great career going forward. You want to come up here? We'll do a Kodak moment.
Okay.
I'm told they call him Kevin Wang. He placed 12th at the New York State Championship in Almyra, New York. Two straight all-state selections. And I believe Mr. Frank Fiori, his coach, is here. Frank, do you want to bring Kevin? Also, you win, right? But Kevin, please come up here. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. Valenti and Board of Education for inviting us here tonight. I'm very proud to be representing the Eastchester varsity golf team, an incredible group of dedicated student athletes, and after another successful year, we had two athletes make the final round of the Section 1 tournament. Congratulations to Quinn Lynn Hood, he's a ninth grader, and to our 10th grader, Kevin Wang. Kevin's success continued throughout the New York State tournament as well, as he placed 12th at the state competition with through 99 invited competitors. For the second year in a row now, Kevin has been awarded all-league, all-section, and all-state honors, and he is currently one of the finalists for the Lo-Hud Golfer of the Year. Kevin is an exceptional team player. He's a joy to coach, and we look forward to supporting his continued success here at Eastchester.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the school inviting me here. This year, I'm very proud that I can represent Eastchester High School and Section 1 to participate in the 2023 New York State Public High School Championship. This year, I placed 12th. This is an improvement of last year, I placed 20th. My goal next year will be in top 10. I still need working harder to get this goal. Thank you.
Is Joe in the audience? There's Joe. Joe, we're going to make you a full-time TV assistant. You're on the consent agenda tonight. And Joe has a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of great ideas about what we can do with television in Eastchester. He has suggested a program called Inside the Classroom, if I'm not mistaken.
Absolutely.
And I think tonight, you did a piece at Waverly on the Reveal Math program.
Yes.
And we'll be showing that to the group. So Joe is a great addition. He's been with us for part of this year on pretty much a part-time basis. We're bringing him on full-time for next year. So he's an exciting addition. And also Nick Sochin, who wanted to be here tonight, he will be our theater director. He began that work again last year, and we're bringing him on full-time for this coming year. Nick played a big part, for example, in the Greenville graduation at the high school auditorium today. He knows those lights, he knows the whole apparatus mechanism there, handles it very well. So two full-time welcome additions that the board will be appointing tonight. This is also the last meeting of the year, as the president indicated, and I think we ought to thank the entire board for their service to the community. It should not go unnoticed that it's an unpaid position, a position really of service to the broader community of Eastchester. Countless hours, even though we try and keep meetings to a minimum, board members do a lot of work on their own, reading reports that are sent from the superintendent, being in touch with each other in terms of communicating, attending events, PTA meetings, other events throughout the school district. So they're an extremely active group and a group that deserves the recognition of the community. So tonight, we say thank you to the board for your service through the year. Let's give them all a big round of applause. We would like to now honor and thank specific board members who have been with us. Vito Catania is a former board president, at least once, perhaps more, three, over 27 years. And we'd also like to honor, in addition to Vito for his extended and dedicated service to the board, we'd also honor tonight Mr. Judah Holstein, who is a former board vice president, is the current board secretary, and has been a trustee for nine years. Both gentlemen have served with distinction, and if you both would come up to the podium, and Madam President, we would like to present you with... First of all, to the more senior of the two, Mr. Vito Catania, in grateful appreciation to Vito Catania for 27 years of outstanding school-based service to the Eastchester children and school community. We thank you, we extend best wishes to you for future success from the Eastchester Board of Education this June 20th, 2023.
Thanks. I'm glad.
Do I have to say a few words?
Very few. I didn't come prepared to say anything, but I just want to thank you for this. I wasn't expecting a plaque or anything. But I just want to say that, you know, you're all going to find out, some of you have found out already, board service is... A lot of people will say thank you to you, but not enough. Not enough people will. And thank you to you, thank you to everyone who's voted for me in the past, and thank you for letting me serve the community for 27 years. It's been an honor, and I think I'm leaving the place better than I found it. There have been some ups and downs, and you will experience some up and downs as well, but just keep it moving forward and upward, and you should be okay. So, thank you.
Because we have a second one, and we'd like to present this to Mr. Judah Holstein. Again, Judah, in grateful appreciation for nine years of outstanding school-based service to the children of Eastchester and the school community. We thank you and extend best wishes for future success from the Eastchester Board of Education this June 20th, 2023. And then we also, and we gave Vito one too, from Westchester Putnam School Board Association, is honored to recognize you for your support and service over these past nine years, and hopefully it'll give me a chance to sign my name on that as well, okay? Congratulations to you, and Kodak moment, did you get it?
Got it, thank you. I can't, you know, Vito expressed the same feelings that I have. I can't thank you all enough, both my current members, all the members I've served with over the years, and the community for allowing me to serve you. I too hope that the district is better off now than it was when I started, and I look forward to seeing the next generation of board members do great things. I come from a prior generation of board members, and my wife was a student here. So, you know, I hope we see more continuity of generations of people in the community in our school district. Thank you all.
It is also a time to thank all of our district administrators and our building administrators, and really the entire faculty. I'm told that tradition in Eastchester is that at the last board meeting, we extend gratitude, and that gratitude has to go to every employee of the district who has given generously over the course of this year to the children of the district. There are many gifts each day that are given to our children from the heart, from each teacher, each staff member, each administrator, each employee. We acknowledge and recognize that tonight, from the part-time school monitor to the full-time team that we have. They're a wonderful team dedicated to our children, and we thank them all tonight. Let's give them all a big round of applause. We did announce that the major presentation tonight would be on Reveal Math, a new math program that has been put in place this school year. And no one better to start that presentation but Minnie Iannuzzi, our K-12 STEM supervisor. Minnie will talk about the findings of surveys that we've done with our teachers and parents, and then she and I will also do a joint presentation at a certain point, and then there are some additional items I would like to bring to the board's attention in a final presentation. We also will have a video for you, so we'll be spending a good deal of time talking about Reveal Math. But Minnie, why don't you start us off, okay?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me again. Good evening, everyone at home watching, community members, teachers, staff, and everyone. So I'm going to report out a little bit about the results from the surveys that we did. We surveyed both parent and community members, as well as teachers. And the goal of this was to, you know, to garner feedback from the teachers, from the community about this, about Reveal Math, and use that information to kind of guide our planning forward. How can we make improvements? How can we better serve our students? So it was a very good experience for us, and we did get a lot of good feedback, so. So just as an overview, we had 189 parent responses. Some of those responses were from the same parent, so if you had a student in more than one school, you may have answered the survey more than one time. And we had 55 teachers participate in the survey. So I want to start out by saying thank you so much to everyone who did participate in the survey. Certainly, we would love to have, we would have loved to have some more parent responses, although 189 is pretty good, especially considering, you know, it's the end of the school year, and we know how busy everyone is. So we very, very much appreciate everyone that was able to respond. And the teachers, we got, you know, a very, very good amount of our teachers responding as well. Overall, the support for the math program among teachers and parents is very strong. And of course, in our first year, there are, you know, many things that we want to improve on, but overall, as, you know, I think you have all seen the results, the support is strong. And then the idea is that we're using data and feedback to inform our next steps for both teacher and parent support. So I want to start out by saying a few things about a math program. The first thing is that the math program does not dictate what we teach. The New York State standards, which is put out by the Board of Regents, is what we teach. So we had certain questions about how come my student is learning this in this grade? Well, they're learning that in this grade because that's what the New York State standards call for. And in New York State, as a New York State public school, these are the standards that we are supposed to be teaching. So that's the first thing. A math program, or any program, science, social studies, English, it doesn't matter, is a tool for teachers to teach those standards, right? So the magic comes with the teacher. So in the classroom, the teacher is what brings the program to life, the teacher is what, you know, is assessing, is guiding the instruction, is meeting the student needs. So what we see in paper is not what you see in a classroom, right? It's only part of the equation, but it is a tool for teachers to use. And then the other thing is that the standards call for a balance between conceptual understanding as well as procedural fluency, and both of those together are integral for math understanding. So some areas for celebration. Many, many teachers cited, the program provides a plethora of teaching resources, so, you know, everything from the PowerPoint presentations to guided sheets to exit tickets, to reinforced sheets, to online components. So there's so many resources in Reveal, and that was definitely an area that teachers were very thankful for. It allows for differentiation for multiple skill levels, like, so when teachers break up into small groups, for example, there is a differentiation resource per group. So that was also a nice thing that teachers cited as very useful. Reveal does help, the structure of the lessons helps promote problem-solving and reasoning. That is another big area that we want to promote, is, you know, kids not just following along steps or mimicking what a teacher's doing, but actually digging into problems and using their reasoning skills to solve some of those problems. It also provides lots of opportunities for in-depth discussion. So again, you know, people learn many times through the social aspect of learning, right? If I'm talking to a neighbor, or if I'm leaning on a friend, or I'm asking questions, these are ways that people, not just students, but people process information. And one of the strong points in Reveal that teachers cited was that it really promotes that discussion piece. Also, it provides varied and plentiful opportunities to assess student understanding. So assessment obviously is integral to teaching, right? If I know what's happening with my students, I can then, you know, pivot to maybe grab this resource or, you know, do something here. So it not only provides assessment opportunities throughout a single class period, it also provides exit tickets at the end of the lesson, as well as many opportunities for assessment throughout the school year. So we're talking about pre-assessments, you know, post-assessments, and as well as kind of intermediate assessments throughout. of intermediate assessments throughout the school year. Homework is well-aligned to the lesson. That was something that teachers definitely cited, that the lesson and the homework were well-aligned to each other, and finally, that students really expanded their math vocabulary and were much more able to articulate their math thinking. So, you know, some teachers cited that they were actually very surprised at how kids were able to articulate their math thinking during the school year. And so, again, that comes with practice, and it comes with those discussion opportunities and really deepening their thinking through that discussion. So those were some areas of celebration. Obviously, I'm not naming all of them, but these are some of the patterns that we noticed in the data. So for some areas of growth, I think that one of the biggest areas was that a lot of the lower-grade parents cited that the text can be wordy, and even teachers also cited that sometimes that that language could impede access to some of the mathematics. So that's something that we are definitely going to be looking at next year, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Professional development, you know, teachers ask for a greater emphasis on the implementation of the actual math program rather than on just pedagogy, which is kind of the science of the teaching. We definitely tried to strike a balance this year because we heard that feedback, but certainly that's something, again, we can work on more next year in year two. And, you know, I think teachers also now have a better grip on what exactly do I have questions about, what is it that I want to work on, what is it that I want to learn more about in terms of the program, and how to implement it even better next year. Another issue that came up was just, hey, we need more time. We need more time for some collaborative planning. So for example, if in the lower grades they felt that some of the language was wordy, they wanted time to sit with their teacher teams, with their grade level partners, and kind of like weed through the language and say like, all right, what's appropriate here? What's a good level of language that is not going to impede the math, but also is not going to take away kind of the rigor of the program? The online dashboard can be a bit cumbersome, so that was something that we have communicated with the publisher. I don't know what their plans are yet for making that a little bit more user-friendly, but the good thing is that the teachers have had a year under their belt, and they are learning how to navigate it in a way that's useful for them and efficient in the classroom. But hopefully, that's something that the feedback will do something on the publisher's end. Another big thing that came out, and I think this was, you know, kind of the impetus behind this, was that the communication between the teachers and the parents, and really the district and the parents, is really crucial, especially with a new program. And, you know, I think that came out loud and clear, that many parents weren't aware of certain resources that were out there. They weren't seeing the workbooks come home, for example. They didn't know how to access the online piece. And so that is something we are definitely going to be working on next year with parent universities, and more information at back-to-school night, more information going home, and then, of course, continuing, excuse me, to collect feedback throughout, you know, throughout next school year as well, to just keep, you know, keep the pulse and make sure that we are trying to address the needs of the community. The other thing that came out was I think parents need more support in understanding newer methods and strategies. I'll talk a little bit about it in the video, but certainly the math itself hasn't changed, right? It's, hey, how come we're, you know, doing this strategy as opposed to the old way? And, you know, why aren't we just using the algorithm instead of, you know, this looks very convoluted and complex, why are we doing this? So that's definitely something that we want to help people understand more and why, and certainly even, you know, even as a teacher, even as somebody myself who's done professional development for many, many years, it's something that, it takes time, right? And it doesn't happen overnight, but it's definitely something that we are going to be working towards. And then finally, parents want more resources to support their children at home. We heard that as well, loud and clear. So we're going to be working on making something more user-friendly on our website that is accessible for all parents, that they can go to, for anything from like, you know, a link to an online math program, or First in Math, or things like that, that will just be one place, a one-stop shop for parents that, you know, has some resources there. So those are some of the growth opportunities that we definitely noticed in the data. So again, thank you so much for everyone's feedback. So looking forward, I talked a little about these already, but, you know, we're definitely looking forward to an increase in parent support. Parent university sessions, most parents that were interested in parent university really said that they were interested in recorded sessions that they could watch at their leisure. You know, when they're hanging out, having a glass of wine, they're watching the first, the parent university session, I don't know. But certainly, we welcome parents to come to school and actually sit down in a classroom and learn alongside each other. Back-to-school nights, more information at back-to-school nights as well, like at the beginning of the school year, that was something else that was cited. Hey, how come we didn't know about this in the beginning of the school year? And we definitely take ownership of that. I think we were trying to get it off the ground with teachers, and we missed the ball, so we definitely want to make that up to the parents. And also, again, like I said, more information accessible and an easy place on the website. In terms of professional development, we definitely want to look more at professional development that is more aligned to the program. And again, with teachers now having that year under their belt, really being able to zero in on what it is that they want help on, and I think that's going to be, you know, in a way, almost more useful because now they know what they need help on, as opposed to the beginning when maybe they didn't know what they didn't know yet. And then also, how to best utilize some of the other resources. So there are some, I think there was, for example, a math workstation kit that we definitely want to use more during Wynn time next year. So that's something that we're looking forward to implementing in terms of maximizing that differentiation during the Wynn period. And then, again, curriculum planning, making language more accessible, you know, while not diminishing the rigor of the mathematics. And then also, finding additional practice problems aligned to the standards. That was another thing that some teachers felt like there weren't enough practice problems. So that's another area that we are looking for resources for as well. And then finally, you know, we're making a commitment to ongoing collection and response to feedback from the school community. That includes parents and teachers, and we'd like to add in kids as well, so we can hear their voices in this, and to really get like a 360 view of how we're doing, what can we do better, and how can we really, you know, try to get everybody successful in math. So that's what we're working on.
Do you want to show the video now?
Sure, yeah, if they have it up.
Take the way you're in classroom video, and then I'll perceive that you want powerpoint.
Yeah, great.
Explain what the...
Yeah, let me just also say, so Joe Blute, who's at the back, he actually produced this edition for us, it's called Inside the Classroom. And Ms. Chiapelli, who is our highlighted teacher, she's actually at the back, if you want to wave. She's one of our first-grade teachers at Waverly, and we're so thankful that she actually did this on really short notice, and it was fabulous, because, you know, I've visited her classroom several times, and her kids are really like, just out of bounds, like amazing with their math talk and their ability to articulate their thinking. So you'll get a little sneak peek into Ms. Chiapelli's classroom. And I want to thank Joe for producing, so. Hi, my name is Minnie Iyanusi, and I'm the supervisor of STEM K-12 here in Eastchester School District. This year, we brought Reveal Math program to K through 5, and today, what you're going to see is a sneak peek of what Reveal looks like in the classroom. So we piloted Reveal Math last year with two teachers per grade level, and this year was the first year that we implemented Reveal throughout the school district, K through 5. We're going to start this lesson today, looking at this. So in this lesson, you're going to see Ms. Chiapelli with her first-grade class at Waverly. And this lesson is really about what does an equal part mean? What does it look like? And how do we describe and prove that something is equal to another part? Ms. Chiapelli is going to put some numbers on either side. We are going to see what happens when I do that. This is really the introduction to fractions and fraction thinking for the later grades and serves as that foundational learning. What happened when I put 7 on this side of the scale? One of the features of Reveal is that students get to work in different ways throughout a lesson, and they're never just sitting and bored. Then they get to work in groups, or in pairs, or individually on solving problems. Think about it in your mind. If I take 5 and 2, and I put it on this side, turn and talk to a partner. Now, what might happen? They start out the lesson always with a notice and wonder, or a conversation starter that gets them thinking about the mathematics. What did you notice? Melina?
Both of the houses are, the two houses are not equal. The first one is smaller and the other one is bigger, so like, if you use it on like those equal things, then it would be like that.
There's always also a chance for students to reflect on their learning at the end. This metacognition is extremely important in order to really take the learning to the next level. So they're not just applying something new, they're now actually thinking about that application. This leads to longer-term learning and keep retaining of that information for all kids. What have we learned that you love so much about Reveal Math?
On the open number line thing.
That's one strategy that you really enjoy?
Um, the equations.
Equations? How about part, part, total? Should we do it? Should we show him part, part, total? Ready, let's say it. Part, part, total. So one of the hallmarks of Reveal is the spiraling idea, and what you're going to see actually is by the end of the year, students have amassed a whole number of different ways to express addition and why those things work. So you'll see an example of, you know, number lines, and visual models, and bar models, and things like that, that really show the deepening of understanding of what addition and subtraction really mean. You know, we've had some questions from parents. It definitely looks a little bit different than maybe how you and I learned math in our classrooms. And, you know, the math itself is the same, it's just that the thinking behind it has become a little bit more at the forefront. So it's not, you know, we're not just memorizing formulas or memorizing how to do things. We're actually trying to teach kids why they are doing these steps, why are they using these formulas, so that they can actually apply them to real problem-solving situations in their life.
Reveal Math is so awesome because it teaches me so many things, and I have so much fun doing it.
This is how kids should engage in the classroom with mathematics, so that we really promote critical thinking and problem-solving for the future. And these are things that won't just, you know, serve them well now, but hopefully will serve them well as they progress through Eastchester, and then, of course, in their everyday lives and in their futures.
A big round of applause. Adriana, thank you for opening your classroom to us, and we really appreciate the opportunity to look inside.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I'll continue with the report, and don't go too far away, Minnie. I did want to link the recommendations that Minnie is making to some of our strategic priority goals. As you know, the board has priority two, strengthening student programs and outcomes. So we do want to look at increased practice, number sense, and fluency. We want to look at K-8 fact fluency, and as you know, we've added First in Math this year, is that right? And that is an online practice program, and that may bring some of the fact fluency that some members of the community were looking for, so they complement. That is one specific goal that we'd like to put on the table. Secondly, we want to take greater advantage of the Wynn period. For those in the community who may not know what the Wynn period is, it's a wonderful new program initiated this year at all the elementary schools, at Greenville and Huch. It runs for 60 minutes each day. At Waverly, it's either 40 or 45, what is it? 45. And the original purpose was to serve special needs pupils through speech, language, other related services, and provide academic intervention in reading and math, and it does that very well. For our students who are in neither special needs or academic intervention, children have been doing projects and guided reading. We'd like to accelerate that program for next year and create a more structured curriculum that has scope and sequence to it. So we've met with the principals on that, and they're in full agreement that the program could target accelerated learning. Students who have neither need for the other buckets that we've created, and through guided math and reading, differentiated instruction, and some project-based work, and combined with First in Math, would have a more structured opportunity to accelerate within math for certain periods, and then ELA for others. It could be an alternate-day program. So that would be another priority that we'd like to put on the table in terms of building on where Reveal Math is, and also ELA as well. And finally, I think Minnie made the point, I want to reinforce it. When you read through all the opinions of the surveys, what came through loudly and clearly is that parents want to learn more about what we're doing in our schools. Parent university is a handy term. It appears our parents would like to see more online resources in general that they could access. They particularly want workshops that they don't have to schedule to be there synchronous-wise, but they would like asynchronous workshops. Archive it up there on specific topics, and then I could access it when I need it. I think we need to make better use of our teacher-parent online chats, and look for innovative ways, like inside the classroom, and other approaches to bring parents closer to the classroom. to the classroom, closer to the learning, not just in math education, but ELA as well, the focal points of what we're doing. Do you want to add anything more to that? Or do you feel you've...
No, I think, I mean, you know, we're definitely, this summer, we're really thinking, we're going to, you know, go through even more, but think about, you know, what might those parent universities look like? What are the topics that we're thinking about covering? And we can definitely get more feedback from the community about, you know, what it is that parents want to see during those times.
So, before I go to the next topic, are there any questions from board members about the Reveal Math program? And this is not the first time you'll hear about it. I'd like to come back mid-year, next school year, talk a little bit more about progress that we've made. Dr. DiMarco.
Thank you, Minnie, for that presentation. And thank you, Ms. Chiapelli. That was really adorable, really, to see the kids be so excited. And thank you for letting us have a glimpse into your classroom. I think this is a great series to start, so that was very nice. So, I was hoping that the survey results would have been included in tonight's presentation just to give more of a, more of a perspective on how the parents and teachers are feeling. I know you said that the support was overall strong. But I do feel like the last time we spoke about Reveal Math, we kind of only spoke about the positive. And here, from our perspective, or I'll speak for myself, I kind of want to see more, what are the areas for improvement? Because I have to say, from reading the anecdotal responses, as well as from a lot of conversations I have with a multitude of parents, it was not an overwhelmingly celebrated program this year. So, I want to be sensitive to the concerns of the parents and teachers. More specifically, their concerns about, I see, you know, from the parent surveys, they're concerned about the students not having enough time to master or reinforce the basics. I think a lot of us have agreed on that. A lot of the parents have commented that they have reached out with feedback over the course of the year. And I know that was not the impression that we had from the initial presentation. Not enough communication from the district with the rollout. Parents were not aware. A lot about word problems and language comprehension. Also, I think some of us are still kind of wondering why was this program chosen as opposed to other math programs? Some comments from the teacher survey that stood out to me, also echoing the feedback about a lack of practice of numerical fluency, grade-level appropriate language, I think we've spoken about that as well, the teacher's comfort level with teaching Reveal. A lot of them also say that they have shared concerns over the year. That was in the survey results. Comments on high-level language, a lot of gaps between the Go Math and Reveal. So, I know this would be different at different levels, right? So, we have perhaps second graders that are still working with, you know, reading to learn, right, at this level, and the gaps with Go Math and Reveal. But then also, you know, fourth and fifth graders that didn't have that strong basis of multiplication, division, and now are being shown different strategies. So, how can we address those gaps moving forward? What are the summer goals and deliverables that we can show our teachers to support them and for the parents to know for the children going forward? I know it takes time. I know it's a new program for us, but I don't think any of us want to see the elementary kids kind of be the guinea pigs while we're trying to figure it out. So, I was hoping that, you know, for the summer, there'd be some more specific goals for how we can help the students for next year.
I mean, well, you mentioned, you mentioned a lot of items. So, some of those I think we've, I did hit on in terms of, you know, the areas... Can I go backwards? I just want to go...
Sure.
Yeah. Oh, oh, no. It's not here. This is yours. Hold on. I'm looking for mine. Hold on one sec. I'm sorry. There we go. Yeah. So, in terms of the looking forward piece, you know, we know that the language is an issue, especially in the lower grades. I also want to say that the teachers know that too. And so, the teachers are not just putting a book in front of kids, right? They are helping students read through. They are breaking it down piece by piece.
I just want to clarify, I'm not putting this on the teachers. I'm putting this on the program. So, I don't want it to be misconstrued as me putting the responsibility on the teachers not having done what...
Oh, no, no.
Or anything like that.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I guess what I'm saying is that, yes, the language is, is something that has been noted as, as could be, you know, difficult for some students and that teachers are working actively on helping students break down, you know, word problems, wordy word problems, things like that that might pose, you know, an impediment to, like, learning the mathematics, for example. That was just one thing that you mentioned. You mentioned a bunch of things. Again, the professional development, more aligned to the program. That, again, that was something that was shared with the, with the teacher survey. And then curriculum planning aligned, again, to kind of making the language more accessible, more practice problems. The fluency piece, which is, you know, the First in Math, we're going to, you know, implement that fully next year. That's another piece that we know, you know, parents are concerned that, you know, they're not getting enough practice with the facts. So, First in Math is definitely a very, very good vehicle for that. And then, in addition, we'll look for other, we are using other resources like iExcel and things like that as well. But, and then putting those things in a place that's very accessible on the website. I'm trying to think of other things that you said. But, you know, again, we're going to, if there's anything, I guess, specific that you feel like we're not addressing, that's something that we can look at making a plan for, definitely. Yeah.
I also have, oh, so, go ahead, Dr. Vali.
No, I was going to say, we, we want to continue an ongoing conversation. We may want a subcommittee of the board to work with us in an ongoing way. That could, you know, we have a policy committee, we have finance committee, facilities committee. Maybe through our curriculum committee, we could focus a little bit more on Reveal Math and anything in literacy that would be appropriate as well. But go ahead.
So, just going off of the iExcel and the other programs, are they going to be available over the summer for the children to practice on? Because I think at some point, iExcel stops, First in Math stops. Is the district going to allow the children to work on those programs over the summer?
That may be a question more for Kevin.
Oh, okay.
Accessibility during the summer, Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe elaborate a little.
Well, I like yes, but why don't you tell us a little bit more about, yes?
Hi, everybody. Yeah, the short answer to the question is, are our instructional technology tools, the question being, are our instructional technology tools available over the summer? The answer is yes. However, there is a caveat to that. In order to facilitate the appropriate provisioning of our information system and all the tools for use in September, the tools will be paused in the state that they're in right now. What that means is that students will maintain their access to things like iExcel and other mathematical programs that we have, but they will maintain the access using the resources that were available from this school year. In other words, it's not rolled over to their next year's teachers until, I believe it's August 16th is the date that we have on the calendar for that. So, the short answer is yes, but not with their new teachers. And there's some, there's some procedural details in there, too. As you know, we release the teacher dates and all of that at the same time. So, there's, there's just some...
Right. So, but if a child's in third grade now, they can still continue working on third-grade math problems off of iExcel.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. And I actually do have a couple of additional questions for Minnie. Thank you for the presentation. My big concern about the presentation is, and this is just from a practical point of view, shouldn't that presentation and that analysis been done before the selection of the Reveal Math program? Because I'm now understanding that in sixth grade, there's going to be a new program for the math in sixth grade. Has there been a deep dive into that program, just like kind of what we did here? Because, again, fifth graders, this year had Reveal, last year they had Go Math, next year they have this new program. I want to make sure that the data that was collected, that we're making an informed decision. Because in all honesty, Minnie, I think it was very rushed to come into this new math program with all these issues. I mean, and just, just looking from the outside, if you have a math program that you need to have all these secondary helps at an elementary level and it's so wordy, to me, that's a red flag. And I do know in other districts that had used Reveal this year, they basically are allowing their teachers to say, okay, we still have Reveal Math because we paid for it, but let's work around the Reveal Math program incorporating Go Math so the kids get the standards. But it's not so heavily on Reveal Math. Because our concern is, we want the kids to excel in math, but we also need to inflate their ego because a lot of the comments from the parents, their egos have been deflated, I mean immensely. So, I think the video of the first graders was great. I think a video of how it's affected children in the fourth and the fifth grade and hearing their breakdown over the program is very concerning. So, I really would hope the district and the curriculum team does a really good deep dive into the math programs because I really don't want another repeat session from fifth to sixth grade because I know it's a problem for a lot of the fifth graders and they're, they're now all freaking out going into sixth grade.
On the sixth grade program, you are correct. There is a new program being proposed at grade six. Why don't we do something on that at the reorg meeting? All right? We can have a brief presentation on that? We can put something together for the reorg meeting on July 5th, have a chance to take a look at it, and so before the fact, we understand the program a little bit better. There will be curriculum development days during the summer. I want the board to know that. A good number of them will be dedicated to content areas that we're talking about tonight. Certainly, literacy and math stand number one and two in that dedication. So, we have budgeted for a considerable amount of professional development beginning next week.
Thank you.
And extending into the July timeframe. Is that right? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Why don't you take me back home, Minnie?
Sorry.
All right? Thank you. While Minnie is doing this, is Joe Gilson in the house? All right. Joe, come on up here. I think everybody knows Joe is our assistant principal at the high school. And we invited Joe here tonight because we'd like to appoint him as the summer school principal. We're delighted that Joe stepped forward, and I thank Dr. Capuano as well, for inviting Joe to become the summer school principal. For many years, we had an outsider who did a good job. I'm not here to critique that. But it's always a more comfortable feeling when one of your own administrators will be heading up the program with our own students. So, Joe will assume that this summer, in addition to his own duties, which are considerable during the summer. And you want to say a few words about the program, Joe? So, I've got some data up there. Why don't you say a few words?
Thank you, Dr. Valenti, and good evening to the Board of Ed. Thank you so much for this opportunity. It's a privilege to take on a leadership role like this as we go forward. Looking forward to working with the students and the teachers to acquire the necessary course credit and to make a summer school program as enjoyable as you can for the summer. As you see in front of you, we're taking place July 10th through August 17th. We will be at Ann Hutch, all the construction going after high school. And the classes up there, and there will be more information coming out later this week for anyone that's interested. And the same topic in that hallway, we're going to use Ann Hutch, we'll have two other great programs going on at this point as well. There will be the summer ramp-up for algebra program for middle school students. I want to thank Minnie and Ms. Laboue at the middle school for putting this together. I'm sure it's going to be great. Worked well last year. In addition, we're currently looking into a potential pre-calculus summer boot camps for high school students. And I want to thank Dr. Capuano and Ms. Erin Glimmeyer, who's the mathematics and computer science department chairperson for putting this together. We're still working through the logistics of that as well. So, that's what will be going on for our summer school program at Ann Hutch. While I also have the floor, I wanted to quickly mention to you, in addition to all the exciting work we do at the high schools prepared for next year, one of the other things we'll be tackling this summer is following up with our tri-state visit. You may remember from a previous board meeting, Dr. Valenti talked about the tri-state visit. They came to observe our school counseling department and look at the college planning process this past April. School and district leaders and high school counselors spent most of the fall and the winter preparing for this visit. It was a great experience. We had the privilege of working with other school counselors, current principals and district administrators, as well as superintendents and former superintendents. We're now moving to the stage where you start to develop a timeline for recommended action. While we start this process over the past month plus, we are looking forward to this summer, we have some more time together. Specifically, we'll be meeting as a team, as well as two consultants that have worked in the tri-state team. There are two school counselors within Westchester. And we'll be meeting as a team to take a deeper dive into report and help us develop where we want to go, where we can improve, and what steps we can take. We'll be meeting July and continuing to work throughout the summer next year. It's a great opportunity for us to build upon the success of the high school guidance department and continue to build upon the great program we have here. Now, thank you for your time. I'm happy if there's any questions, otherwise. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay, and Joe will be appointed tonight. And there will be a letter, this is the schedule that Joe put together for the algebra regions, global history, geography, US history, government, earth science, as you can see, chemistry, and geometry. So, we're running a full program at the Ann Hutch School, and those will be the region states that you see there. Are there any questions on summer school? A letter will be going out this week with a couple of attachments to it. One will feature the ESY school that Dr. Stowe will be heading up with his assistant directors. And a message from him will be attached to that letter, and then the information that Mr. Gilson shared tonight. So, the community will get a full view of what we plan to do this summer. Vito?
Do we accept students from other districts in our summer school? Because in the past, we've had joint summer schools with Bronxville.
My understanding is that Eastchester, Bronxville, and Tuckahoe had participated in the past. This year, I have not heard inquiries from any other districts. Have you, Dr. Stowe?
Some high school summer program?
ESY.
Well, we do have students from other districts.
So, you do have districts.
Tuition, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, but that was my question because of offset on costs.
Right. But it's part of the total revenue and tuition we get for services throughout the year, correct?
Typically, the same students that stay with us during...
Right.
I'm talking specifically about high school kids.
Now, for the regions-level program, the answer is no.
No, we don't. We do not. We offer enrollment for other districts. That ended with COVID. And what we found was it's far more manageable with our own students. We keep it a little bit smaller and a little bit tighter as a result.
Okay.
And if there was tuition, it would be very negligible.
I get it.
If there was tuition, it would be very negligible.
Yeah, I know that, but it's principal, not Joe principal.
Ellie, not Al. Finally, we'd like to give the community an overview of where we are at with our infrastructure, health, and safety capital project. So, we'll be putting up onto the website, this is the headshot only, an extensive analysis of where we're at, compiled by our construction folk and our architect. And it will be an update on all the phases. And if any members of the community have any questions, they certainly can bring them to our next regular meeting. But that will become a matter of public information. And at some point next year, we'll bring our architect and construction folks back to talk about the work that had been done during the summer. So, thank you. And... And any questions or comments, so we can proceed with the rest of the meeting?
All right, thank you, Dr. Valenti.
Okay.
All right, we are up to the consent agenda. Who would like to move the consent agenda? Anyone? Yes.
I was going to, I was going to close, Vito. Yes, I'll move the consent.
Okay, Vito?
We're going to miss you, Joe.
The Board of Education includes the consent agenda, which includes the following: approval of minutes, personnel agenda, freedom of preschool education, special education recommendations, business office recommendations, other business items.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Okay. Our next meeting is July 5th. That's our reorganization meeting. And we are up to comments from the public.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Capuano. I'm the chairman and president of the Eastchester Teachers Association. And with me is clear the long-chance president of the Eastchester Teachers Association. We're here tonight because members of both of our associations asked us to speak to the board about our concerns regarding the elimination of the principal, elimination of the position of assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction by the Board of Education for the 2023-2024 school year. We'd like to speak a little bit about both the person and the position very briefly. First, both the ETA and the EAA would like to thank Scott Winn for his 14 years of service. As an assistant principal, and now assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, Mr. Winn has been competent, capable, supportive and responsive. Thank you, Scott, for your service to the Eastchester faculty, staff, families and students.
Second, with regard to the elimination of the position of assistant superintendent, both the EAA and the ETA have strong concerns. Number one, we will become one of the only districts in the county without an assistant superintendent for curriculum and development. Number two, removal of the position and person effectively eliminates all institutional knowledge at the district level. The two remaining assistant superintendents and superintendent have one year or less of experience in Eastchester. Number three, this change was not reflected in the budget process, which was ultimately approved by the community. Mr. Winn was notified of the elimination of the position the day after the budget vote. Number four, the decision to eliminate the position was made without a transition plan communicated to the administrative team.
This is a significant position in the district offering significant support to our building administrators, our teachers, and in turn, our students. The impact of this position, as reflected by virtually every district in the county, is deep and broad. Current areas of oversight relate to hiring, new teacher orientation, professional development, the mentoring program, curricular initiatives, observations of professional staff, state assessments, ENL, district title grants, summer school planning, the district calendar, tri-states visits, which would not have occurred without his work, and all content areas not overseen by our current supervisors.
Many of these areas are interrelated and could feasibly be left without coherent district oversight. A single point of curricular leadership offers consistency of message, consistency of implementation and coherence of program. Thank you for entertaining our concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff and Claire. Let me just try and make some distinctions for the community. The board has not adopted the reorganization plan. They will at their July 5th reorganization meeting. But I do want to comment on the position itself. It has nothing to do with the person. It's a positional change. And I did start the discussion quite clearly in the public budget process. Specifically, I noted that when we look at the percentage of monies that Eastchester is dedicating to administrative support. Now, how do we define administrative support? It's everyone from the superintendent of schools, through the assistant superintendents, through directors, through supervisors, building principals, assistant principals and assistant directors. So your entire administrative structure constitutes approximately 11% of the budget. The recommendation from the state is that you maintain a budget that only allocates less than 10%, ideally in the 9% to 9.5% for administration. Now, some can look at numbers and make the argument that we're understaffed administratively. Some can look at percentages and suggest that we have more administration than we need. In my view, I think we are administratively heavy. I'll say that publicly. I'm only here a year. I like the idea of three elementary assistant principals. I think they're important. But I think they were added without looking at current job descriptions. And I think they were added without taking into full account as a district, certain duties that are now overlapping. I also think they were added without attention to the fact that the superintendent of schools has a legal and moral and fiduciary responsibility to curriculum and instruction. I don't know what prior superintendents did in this district, but I do know that my training and my commitment is that you are the chief instructional leader. That means curriculum, and that means instruction. That doesn't suggest you ought not to have an assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction. But it does ask, who else do you have that's doing curriculum and instruction? I'm looking at two very capable people here who have been appointed K-12 supervisors. Their entire dedication of salary, time and commitment is to the humanities, English Language Arts and Social Studies, math, science, STEM and all of those key critical areas. That's a very important component of curriculum and instruction, and quite frankly constitute an important part that some of the other districts you cited may not necessarily have. We recently hired a director of technology with educational and administrative credentials. We did not have that. We now have that. In fact, we hired a director of technology. Unfortunately, we're not able to hold on to him, who himself was a director of professional learning. But that has nothing to do with this conversation. We will continue with the directorship and look for a replacement of an individual who brings instruction and curriculum to the table. Additionally, I would like to see this district, and I'll work with the board and the administrative team to make it happen, move more from a central point of view to a building level point of view in terms of instructional leadership. The latest models of effective instructional leadership that have proven in the research is the building principal with his or her assistant principal and a team of coaches and other key teachers. We are now adding coaches, ladies and gentlemen. We added them, we added them last year. We added them this year, literacy, math, technology. They will become part of an instructional team with the principal so that the principal is held responsible not only for enacting the curriculum that is generated at the district level, but also brings about the academic outcomes that we expect in each of our schools. That decentralized approach does allow for more investment at the building level in instruction and curriculum. And our principals and assistant principals and coaches will not be alone because they will be joined at the high school by chairs in each of our departments. And they will be joined at the middle school with our team leaders. And they will be joined, as I mentioned earlier, at the elementary level by coaches, minimally two and possibly a third. So the argument I am making is that I think this district is well-leveraged next year to carry on curriculum, instruction and assessment. We have reviewed, I have reviewed the job descriptions, the position descriptions, and I will continue to work with the folks who are here to look and ensure that all components and parts of our program are attended to carefully and correctly. And while I respect your view, it is another model. There are many models out there. I think that the model that we're looking at for Eastchester will bring about the outcomes that we are planning to bring about, that we've suggested throughout. So that would be my comment on what is being said. If there are any questions or comments from the board, I would welcome them.
Thank you, Dr. Valenti. To be of any more comments from the public?
Colleen Canning, 87, Highland Avenue. I just wanted to echo what a lot of what was said here about Reveal Math, the concerns that Dr. DiMarco and Ms. Lombardi raised. But I also wanted to express what Ms. DiMarco said about our elementary school students being used as guinea pigs. Why is departmentalization being rolled out for Ann Hutch fifth graders, but not over at Greenville? If we're truly concerned about closing the COVID gaps and eliminating the disparities between the two schools, and I've sat here and heard presentations about the differing test numbers and what have you at the north end of town versus the south end of town, why are we having two different models of education for fifth grade students for the next whole year? And I've heard a lot of scuttlebutt and a lot of things on message boards and things like that. But when is this communication going to be officially rolled out to parents? What's happening next year for our fifth grade students? And lastly, the enrollment numbers for the fifth graders over at Ann Hutch. When is the final decision or has a final decision been made on fifth grade class size? Are we, do we have that fifth teacher? Yes or no? And what are the projected numbers for a fifth grade class?
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Colleen Canning.
Tommy, right. You're a parent?
Yeah, Colleen Canning.
Tony. Let me start with your enrollment question.
Sure.
Fifth grade Ann Hutch, 97, 98, I believe. It's hanging in there.
Okay.
Still at four sections.
Okay.
Greenville, I think we're 129. We're in that neighborhood, 120, 125 in that neighborhood. Still have five sections. Departmentalization, that was your other question. We had long discussions with Joanna and Annette and the assistant principals and our supervisors and a number of other folks around the table. And departmentalization can work either with four or five sections. Greenville asked if we could hold and look into some additional scheduling approaches that may better suit their needs. Ann Hutch is ready to go with departmentalization day one in September. Now, we haven't rolled out those models, but will over the course of the summer and definitely by September. It does work ideally with equal numbers of sections. It works with unequal numbers of sections, but not to the total satisfaction of the folks at Greenville. So I want to give them a little bit more time to think it through. We'd like to bring in a consultant during the year, somebody this district has used, who might provide some additional helpful information where you do have unequal sections. Because it could happen either way in either school. Next year, you know you have four and five. Ann Hutch, four. Greenville, five. You could wind up with seven at Greenville and five at Ann Hutch, depending on enrollment. Or conversely, you could wind up with four and six. So we should not allow departmentalization to rest on the foundation of, do you have equal or unequal sections? We can do it with equal, but we can't do it with unequal. You should be able to do it with either configuration. But I want it to be done well.
So in that.
Ergo, Greenville will not stop with the.
While we have this consultant come in and give us.
His wisdom, yes.
Yes, give us this wisdom next year, and then we can roll it out the following year after we've. Rather than have, with all due respect, a, a, I don't, I'm searching for.
A differentiated approach.
Yeah, I'm searching for a tactic. Rather than having a Reveal Math approach, and it just goes out and the parents, and nobody knows what's happening. That's what I, that's my very real concern about departmentalization for Ann Hutch students, fifth grade next year.
That, that no one.
Whatever the guinea pigs, whatever messes up, whatever feedback you hear from parents, it'll be cleaned up for the benefit of Greenville and for the following year. And the consultant will come in and share all their wisdom and will pay them a boatload of money to be like, oh, this is, this was a rushed rollout.
No.
Okay. So educating, educating.
Yeah, no.
Why, why, why is Ann Hutch is not a guinea pig? Greenville?
I resent the term guinea pig.
Okay.
I think that's an unfair characterization of a pilot.
Okay.
This district has long used pilots. In education, it's an acceptable term that a particular school will pilot a program. In this case, let's use departmentalization at Ann Hutch. They're doing it enthusiastically of their free will, and they think that they can make it work. We're going to examine it and report back to the community. Greenville has asked for a little bit more time because they'd like to know they could do it the best with five sections, but they don't have that confidence level today. So pilots are good, and I think we have to allow each school to implement it to their degree.
I just want to jump in for a second and say that Ann Hutch did pilot departmentalization.
Yeah, way back.
Not, not that long ago, because my, my kids were there.
With Mr. O'Neil and Ms. Santoro, I understand that. But then it didn't continue for whatever reason.
For whatever reason.
Yeah, have we revisited what, those reasons before we're rolling it out again? I hope so. Are we confident in the plan going forward? I'm not opposed, I am not, I want to stress, I'm not opposed to all new ideas and trying out something new. I just feel, again, these children learned to read on Zoom, and they, they were first graders in March 2020. Is this the best group to roll out the new things? Or should we just coddle them a little bit more with the traditional elementary school experience and before they're launched off into the middle school?
Well, departmentalization is very much part of the elementary as well as secondary experience.
I know.
It's not an opposition or contradistinction to it.
In the, I think in the traditional elementary school model, you have one teacher for the subjects rather than rotating around. That's what, I'm not an educator, but that's my understanding.
We will roll it out at Ann Hutch at this point. Dr. Keane is very enthusiastic. We'll have her at a meeting. I think Mrs. DePaulotana would like a little bit more time before she feels comfortable with it.
When does it officially get communicated to parents? When does this get communicated to parents? August 15th, here's your new teacher assignment. Oh, by the way, I'm aware about, I'm aware of departmentalization. I don't think many fourth grade or rising fifth grade parents are aware of this change.
The parents will be notified from the school. Dr. Keane and I will work out a notification plan.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, comments from the board?
Yeah, I'll say something.
Vito?
Sure, I'll say something. Once again, I just want to thank everybody for, you know, being able to participate and make a difference in the district for so long with so many different people, 41 people now that I've served on the board with. And it's been a heck of a ride. And the only adjustment I'm going to have to make is I'm now going to have Tuesday nights off. So that's, that's, I think is going to be a good thing. So the one thing that I must say I will miss is being up on the stage at graduation. I intend to be there Friday, okay, for the last time. And when you look at the kids' faces. I intend to be there Friday, okay, for the last time, and when you look at the kids' faces, that's what you have to remember. That's what we are here for, okay? We're not here for arguing about something in the second grade or the third grade. We're here to make a difference in programs that push those kids out the door to the best, with the best abilities that they could develop, and that's what it's all about. So I'll see you at graduation and look forward to it. Thank you.
Vito, I want to thank you for bringing up graduation. There is going to be a question about graduation that has not yet been resolved, so let's get, let's get this out early. The weather forecast, apparently, and I spoke to the middle school principal today, I haven't had a chance to talk to the high school principal, but I did talk to our director of technology. The weather forecast does not look very good for Thursday right now. It's Tuesday, right? However, we have to make a decision sometime tomorrow as to whether that will be an indoor or outdoor at the middle school. Right now, Madeline is leaning toward indoor, but she and I will talk, and a final decision will be made with Kevin and several other administrators sitting around this table, I don't need to mention them all, as to whether or not we need to go indoor or outdoor for Thursday. The same model algorithm will be applied to the high school graduation, all dependent on the weather, right? Weather has not been our friend during this period of June. All of you who have been following the air quality index very well know that we have had some extremely high numbers, and we've had to keep the children indoors. So here we go again with graduation. Will the weather smile on us for Thursday and Friday or not? We don't know today. We'll make a decision as close to the point that we can, and we'll proceed accordingly.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
It'll, will it be livestreamed if we have to go indoors?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Kevin, am I right? We'll livestream?
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
All right, that's, because I actually remembered, I was president one year, and it was in the high school auditorium. Yeah, it was. Where was it?
In the gym.
In the gym. I'm sorry, it was in the gym, not the auditorium. My high school, the auditorium was the gym, so I'm sorry. But yeah, it, it worked, and the only problem was people were restricted as to how many guests they could bring. But if we could livestream it, I think that solves. You know, we didn't have that ability back then. That solves a lot of that problem, and we'll do the best we can.
But the restriction, I'm told, is four tickets.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's going to clear up. It's going to be just fine. Positive thinking.
Love it, love it.
Your math is crazy.
That's right, that's right.
Any other last comments, Judah?
Well, I wouldn't.
Why not?
Put you on the spot now.
Yeah, put me on the spot. I just, you know, thank you again to everyone in the district, the community, the board members, the board members, I don't think I've served with quite as many as Vito, the staff, the administration, the, you know, the people who clean up the room after us and take care of, the essential workers of the community. I just, I'm grateful for, for 10 years here and nine on, one off the island. It was nine years, but I had a year off the island in between. But, and thank you again, that's all I'll say. What can I say?
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Judah and Vito, for all your years of service. Thank you to everyone who helped make this year so successful for our staff and students. Congratulations to all of the graduates, and wishing all of our students and staff a wonderful summer. We will be back July 5th for our reorg. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
And I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor? Okay, good night, everyone.
Thank you. Very good, okay.